expenses for two thousand fifteen. You had a carryover of two point five million from fourteen to fifteen. We have a carryover of three million for two thousand sixteen. So I don't know what you've got carried over from sixteen to seventeen. But, um, your budget was off. Before the revenue, your budget was off. Four point six million. You took in four point six million more than what you budgeted. For your expenses, you were off one point five million. Spent one point five million more than what you budgeted for. Dana made the comment that you try to stay within budget. Well, one point five million over budget isn't trying to stay within budget. That's under twenty-five thousand a month. Oh, but this is just the general fund. I'd like to know why the three million this carryover that we have each year, why it's not going towards courthouse? You made a comment last week, Jason, that property taxes never have been one million. Do you want to sign off on the audit report?
I think, I think we were talking about how much the general fund receives.
That's, that's what the general fund received, what the audit report said.
It's inaccurate. So it receives around four hundred fifty thousand a year.
Well, the audit report said it received one point four million. Do, do you not sign off on the audit report?
Resources taxes, property, see property, see that number up there? Four big five. There's something, four sixty-one, four sixty, four sixty-one. Okay. You're looking up here at this number.
I'm looking at what number.
What you're telling us usually, it's not accurate information. It's your right to talk every week you come in here.
Well, this is what came off the audit report.
General fund usually receives around four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for property taxes.
I'm just saying, this, this came off your audit report, what the auditors gave you.
I'm looking at an audit report right there that it showed you.
Well, the audit report that Dana gave me for two thousand fifteen said that you received one point four million dollars.
I think the auditor's actually coming in today, so if he can stick around to ten.
Okay.
He can speak his behalf also.
But I mean, I got that, I, I pulled that straight off the audit report.
Okay.
Do you have the audit report in front of you?
I could, yeah.
Because you're sitting here saying that I'm lying about it.
I'm not saying I'm lying, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think the information. I think the information some weeks isn't the same with what, what we think about it. But it's your right to come in here and talk and whatever you like to do. But, uh, I mean, I tried to explain to you before. That's what it is.
This is what came off the audit report. You sign off on the audit report. I pulled this straight off the audit report.
I think it's a misunderstanding, what you're seeing is maybe you fully don't understand or something like that, so we'll just.
They listed it as a, as property tax.
Okay.
It went up from the four hundred something in fourteen to one, one point four in fifteen.
What other questions do you have?
I don't have any questions because you're very condescending, you don't believe anything that I've said, and you don't have anything to back it up with. Because you haven't got the audit report, and I pulled the audit report, so.
I mean, I, I just said, I made, first time I made a statement to you about this. Most time I just sit here and listen to you, don't I? Now you're upset.
No, you're very condescending about it.
I sit here every week and listen to you. I don't say much about it, do I?
You just say the numbers don't add up. That's what you've said for several months.
I disagree with you, I disagree with you, now you're upset.
No, I'm not upset, I'm just saying this is what I pulled off the audit report.
No sense to get upset if I disagree with you.
No, you're just saying that my numbers keep changing. This is the number that came off of yours.
The first week you came in, and then the, the second week you came in, you made changes to your numbers, did you not?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
All right. So I'm not saying that that's not true.
Where, where is the three mil, what, what do you plan on doing with the, you had three million left over from last year that carried over? What do you plan on doing with the money that's left over this year?
Kind of, what's Jeff and Gerald will do.
Now, the figures that she goes off of her. Well, let me see, you got an audit here. We're going to add over here to show her.
Oh.
There's a difference between county general operating money and county general money.
You got that thing?
This was telling off the general fund.
Well, they're all. I didn't, what I'm going to show you is what's considered general, county general money. Some counties will have all of their county funds in one account. We have county general, we have. Like all of these, general courtroom security, mental health, tuberculosis, county court system, arresting, medical DUI, recording and filing, uh, fire filing, all of that is county money. If these accounts were to close, and you ask yourself, where would that money go? It's county, it's county money. And so, when you talk about, and I will have to look at your figures, look at what you brought in in order to compare. But, when you, like, some counties will have, like, four million dollars in their county general fund. Well, that's because it's all of these funds combined together. Ours are separate. It's easier to keep up with. So, and that's what I'm trying to show you all. When it's considered county general, and I'm sure that some of the figures are. Well, period, anywhere. That's what it's considered, that's all county general money. Is this mine? I can see that.
Uh, Dana, you're saying that's easier for you to keep up with, have all those accounts.
Well, I mean, it isn't just me, that's the way it's been since I've been here for seventeen years. Most counties, you know, some have them all together in one, some of them have them separate, so it's just the way that it's been. So that's why it's that way. Yeah.
What I'm looking at is general fund, what they called, and that was the, that's your, um, each department, circuit clerk, the sheriff, the coroner, the county clerk, the treasurer, the county board, all those together. And their budgets.
I'd be glad to look over your stuff and compare it to what it says.
Like I told you, Jason, it came straight off the audit report and off of their, what they did, uh, their budget.
I understand, and we'll go over that and get it. You turn to your figures. We had a little discussion, you know, after your visit last week, that, uh, uh, some of the differences will come in budgeting. Say, uh, they budget that we're, we will receive, say, five hundred thousand dollars for state sales tax. You budget that, it's a guideline for you to go by. Say we only get four hundred. It's no fault of theirs, you know, they budgeted what figures they had to figure. So that would cause some of the differences that you're talking about, so. There are a lot of things that contribute to the differences in the audit.
I understand that, that's, um, but to be four million dollars off on your income.
Yeah, I don't believe that it's, it's all that, but like I said, we're looking into, you know, your figures.
Well, that's, that's what the auditors were and what they, what their budget was.
And they'll be here probably at any time.
And it went from, your income went from three point seven million and twelve to seven million in thirteen, to seven point six in fourteen, and seven point eight in fifteen. Because of taxes that was taken in.
What, it was, what kind of tax are you?
From, from EEI.
Well, it isn't just EEI, I want people to understand that.
No, but they, they, they provide in a lot of it.
There are a portion of that money, yeah, you're correct, the majority of that money, but I do want people to understand that we receive sales tax long before EEI.
Yes, but you've gotten a big increase from them over the last few years.
But like we said, that's, you know, probably averages to about forty-one thousand a month. In your household budget, that would probably be equivalent to what, maybe two hundred dollars, you know, something like that, so. It's, uh, you talk about these big figures, like we hit it in one, you know, one sum of money, and we don't.
I understand, you get a monthly, or you get it in a quarter, or whatever.
Drop down, you know, forty-one thousand, so when you're behind already, you know, say twenty thousand, even when you put forty-one in there, that just gives you twenty, so.
But if you're trying to stay within the budget, you shouldn't be running forty and fifty thousand behind. And you made a hundred and twenty-five thousand a month last month, last year, more than what you had budgeted for.
I'd like to go over the papers and compare what you have to what's, you know, either correct or not correct. I mean, we have to even have time to look and see where you got your figures from, if they're correct, if you have any typos or anything like that in there, so.
Well, I said it came straight off the audit that you gave me and straight off the budget that they gave me.
Well, we understand where you got them, you know, we gotta make sure that you have it put where it needs to be and that the figures are correct. You haven't transposed any numbers or all of that, so. As I said, uh, he'll be here, you know, shortly, and probably to address, you know, what concerns you have with their capability of doing our audit and all of that stuff, so.
Well, I said, if, if it's not correct, you're paying a lot of money for it. Auditors come in to get the books ready, and then auditors to audit them, and if they're not doing it correct, you're double paying anyhow. And you've already wasted the money on two, two sets of auditors.
You know, weren't correct, but you think they are, when I spoke to him, I did, you know, send him, forward him the information that you gave us last week. There were some concerns, they said, and they would address those today.
Okay.
In your mind, so. Without, you know, getting into his business, there, you know, there are concerns with your figures also, so.
Okay.
At the bottom of it.
It was good, how about yours?
Good. Been a while since I looked at one of these.
Oh, but it's gonna be thirty thousand killing you.
Yes. Yes, it is.
I think GA pretty much priced it, so. Did it stay?
Yeah.
He's doing good. Getting around pretty good, still going physical therapy and he works out, the gym.
Does he? I see him with Brett sometimes.
So, yeah, I, I get that.
That's your governor, he sent that to us.
Wow, this is famous. A big family, like, you know.
I suppose it is. I'll be actors, probably, you know, some stage names.
Oh, now it's a boulder. It might just be an old man.
Gloria, I didn't get it.
That is your.
Was it to the commissioners?
I think so.
I think so.
Oh, I didn't get it. What is through the wall or a steam pipe?
We don't know exactly, it's just, it's cold, cold water. So I don't know if it's coming up through the bore, it's coming up through cracking the wall.
It just happened when it rained?
It started Friday afternoon. I just happened to look down and look, my whole carpet's wet and nothing. So I put a fan on it.
For your desk, yeah?
Yeah.
From the corner? Yeah.
And then today, there's another leak in the quarter, and it's, like I said, it's super cold water, so.
Does that happen before when it rains?
No, not, I mean, barely.
What did it mean? You had a leak for a couple of weeks, don't you mean?
Yeah, it wasn't.
That was a steam line.
Yeah, that was a steam. Did you do any shopping one evening? Over the weekend?
No.
Dillard's had a really good sale.
Did I?
I missed that one.
Did you give me like the first one call, like, hey, come on over, like?
Yeah.
Everybody knows about the day.
The New Year's Day, Dillard's sale.
I know.
Extra fifty percent.
Well, I had my kids over New Year's Day. That green baby.
She gonna pluck out the keys and?
No, I never do that.
I never have. That's how you get money.
There you go, no property for her.
Can't be, like, I do.
No health and no money.
You gotta try it.
Yeah.
I'll be down there, Laurie, look at that.
Okay.
But I don't want, you know, there was another Band-Aid on that pipe, you remember that? I don't want to, she didn't go and have that replaced, but if it's holding, I think, the pipe's bad. But hopefully it's not leaking. But that was hot water, wasn't it, or was it not? Is that returning?
Well, maybe it, still yet, it should have been not cold.
No, this is.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's, like, somebody likes waiting because it's fresh, it's like.
I feel like we had enough that much rain over the weekend.
You know.
Of course, the ground's saturated too.
Yeah. Thank you for the thirty thousand.
Glad we had it to you, yes.
Thank you, Laurie.
All right, we'll see you.
See you later.
I've been a little under the weather the last few days, I wanna.
You said culture, Jeff, didn't you?
Yeah, I'm back slightly. Put us together over here then.
Yeah.
Got into my office and I was looking through my things to do, and oh my goodness, I'm gonna be on the way over. I gotta start right away.
Miss Crockett, does she want to come?
I don't know, I, I guess Dana had told you, I hadn't talked to you. Yes, yes. Dana had explained to me that there've been some questions about following the audit report and, um, and kinda how to read the statements, and thought maybe it might be helpful if I came and spent a little time talking about those.
Miss, uh, Crockett, she's behind you, she's the one that had to ask some questions about, so hopefully you can answer her questions today.
I'll do my best.
I don't know if, you can look at that, that's the thing she brought in today. I don't know, Dana acted like she had maybe given some other information that Miss Crockett had provided.
She'd sent some, some stuff, I got a chance to look at it as best I could.
Uh, so.
I guess just, uh, well, uh, it looks like we've got questions about the differences between the actual and budget, is kind of what I'm gathering. Is that kind of the, were a lot of the questions or concerns coming from?
Well, there's, there's excess there, and they don't seem to think that there's ex, excess. They're saying you have on the audit report that they took in one point four million in property tax for the general fund. They say that's wrong. Okay?
They say normally a property tax goes into general funds, normally around four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand.
I think that might be, I think terminology might be part of our differences here. Because first of all, we didn't find that any money was missing when we were doing our audit work. I mean, that would have been one of the first things that we would have been explaining. Had we, had we had any concerns about that. It gets a little complicated in the report. So maybe I'll kind of back up a few years in the reports, I forget the exact year, but I think it was around two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, somewhere around there, there was a, a GASB standard that was issued. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they make the rules on what your reports are supposed to look like. And, and, and how we follow those. They had a rule came out that said that in order for a fund to be considered a fund for external reporting purposes, that it had to have a dedicated source of revenue, or it had to be imposed by some kind of enabling legislation. Now, the county has always had a lot of funds set up to account for receipts and dispersments on the specific things. And, you know, it's easier to track, where's the money coming from, where's it going for all these specific purposes? Well, when they, when this new statement came out that defined exactly what a, a fund could be, some of the funds that we've always had didn't meet that definition. So the county has funds, a lot of different funds, and then what GASB says I have to report on, a fund is something different now. So what happens is a lot of those funds that used to always be accounted for separate are still accounted for separately by the county on their internal books. And when the report is drafted, a lot of those funds now become departments within the general fund. So we've kind of got a difference of how we do our budget for fund and how we do our audit report. And there's nothing wrong with that. The county can still continue to account for funds for specific purposes all they want to. It's just that for me to put a clean opinion on it in an audit report, we have to rearrange things a little bit. So, there is a schedule in the report that takes all of those funds that used to be separate individual funds, or are still separate individual funds on the county's internal books, and puts them all together, uh, in columns, so that we've got a grand total. And now that is what I call the general fund in this audit report. And that's just so that we can say we're following the rules that GASB has put out. You know, and that's something we have to do to be able to get a clean opinion. So, that schedule is schedules four and five in the report, and they start on about page sixty-one, go through sixty-six. And what they'll do is, we've got a balance sheet by all those columns, and then we've got an income statement that follows it, shows where all the revenues and dispersments came in columns for each fund, and then that grand total totals up to what I call the general fund. So if you look at the audit report and compare totals for the general fund, and if you're comparing it back to the budget that the county has for what they call the general fund, they're not going to match up at all. And that's appropriate for that to be that way. So what are, what the county has for their budget for the general fund and what gets shown in here as the budget for the general fund are going to be two different numbers. And depending on where you're looking in here, you can find both. Doesn't look like it's clearing up a lot of questions.
Well, I follow along on the budget, um, as far as the, well, as far as the expenses, I mean, I followed along with that. They were, they were over on their budget by one point five million last year compared to their budget and what their actual was. That, um, the expense or on the revenue side, they were, um, they took in four point six million more than what they had budgeted.
And I'm believing, was it last, was it the, the last audit year, one of those years when the budgets were prepared, I don't think there were revenues budgeted, that there was just expenditures budgeted. And, and that might be a good portion of, of what those differences are. You know, and that, and that was just a budgeting practice. I think we talked about it, that was one of our recommendations in the audit, that, you know, budgets need to be prepared for every fund. So that might have been part of why the actuals are so much higher. But it doesn't mean money's missing, it just means that what was actually receipted was receded was more than what was budgeted as expected. You know, that budget's best guess estimates at the beginning of the year, and if it's not accounting for all of the revenues that come in, then there's gonna be big discrepancies there.
Okay, they, you say in two thousand ten this took place, GASB, okay. In two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it was still around four hundred and some odd thou- um, four hundred and some odd thousand for property tax, two thousand fifteen it went up to one point four million.
There was a difference, in two thousand fifteen, the county hired a different accounting firm to prepare the financial statements for the extra, uh, the, the report for the audit. And they did some things differently. Neither firm was wrong, they just did things different, so it kinda makes it a little bit unusual for comparability. The firm for the first, um, couple of years that you noted there, would take the property taxes for just that general fund, the, what the county calls the general fund, and called that, labeled that as property taxes. And what they would do was the property taxes that were receded for all of those other funds that used to be individual funds but get consolidated into the general, and they would put those down in another section for other miscellaneous type revenues. And when the new firm that was hired in fifteen came in, they said, property taxes are property taxes, doesn't matter which fund it is, we think it should be labeled in, in the property taxes. So, they took the same amount of revenues that used to be broken out on two different lines in the reports, and they put them all up here, so what you should see is a, a a drop in the other type of revenues that's pretty equal to the amount that was the increase in the property taxes on the line up above in the same year. Like I said, um, they, all of the revenues were there, they were consistent, when, when we applied our test to and we found them, it was just a difference in where do we put these in the report. Didn't necessarily make either one of them wrong, it just makes them not very comparable. So, uh, I think if you look at the total revenues from all of those years, total revenues should probably be pretty consistent.
Right.
But as far as which row were they putting those property tax revenues on, that's what was different.
Okay. I will check those out.
How about on this here, uh, under, I guess, the condition under that?
Oh, I mean, which one, the top one up here?
Well, it says condition under that section, you know, elaborate on that a little bit too.
Oh, you're testing my memory now, um. Okay.
Cause that was un, what did it say on there, it wasn't specific?
What this was, we found adjustments that needed to be made to those financial statements. So what we were, what we were saying here is that the financial records that you were relying on and making your decisions on had to be adjusted quite a bit before we were able to put an opinion on them that they were fairly stated in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Now, sometimes that's a, a pretty significant deal, sometimes it's not, depending on what the adjustments were for. You know, a lot of times, you're relying on cash basis financial statements, which already are not generally accepted accounting principles. There's nothing wrong with it, it's just different basis. That's the way you make your budget is on a cash basis, so that's the way you review financial statements. And then, remember I was talking about, we've got the, the accounting firm, then it comes in and converts them from the cash basis over to the general accepted accounting principles just for the extra report. If there's any missing adjustments in there, then they have to be made here, and if they're over a significant dollar amount, then it's something that I'm required to put in as, as a recommendation, and that's what these, this was for. I'm trying to, uh, here's what it was, the cost explains that, um, what happened was, the state was doing construction projects on your roads and bridges, and they were paying for everything, but whenever they're done with the road and bridge, it's your road. So, for these financial statements, the value of the construction work that they did has to be reported as a revenue, and you've got a, a an increased asset, you've got a brand new road that goes on your balance sheets. So, that adjustment had not taken place, that's what we were talking about with this adjustment, that's something that you would not have recorded on your internal books anyway.
So that would show an adjustment of like nine hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, and that is only going to show up on your entity-wide statements. There are, um, there are two statements at the very beginning of the financial statements here, and they don't have anything to do with the budget to actual reports. These statements are set up to show your receipts and dispersments more like if the county were a business. You know, it shows your assets and those assets get depreciated, so there's depreciation expense against those. If you were to borrow money, uh, instead of that showing up as a receipt, that would show up as a liability. So again, these are required by general accepted accounting principles, it's part of that adjustment of what the auditing firm, or the, not the auditing firm, the accounting firm is doing when they prepare the financial statements from your records. They, what that meant was that those, uh, the assets in those financial statements were understated and the revenues were understated because that adjustment hadn't been made. So, it, neither one of those transactions would have showed up on your budget to actual statement anyway. So you've got, you've got those first two statements that are supposed to show what your revenues and expenses would look like if you were comparable to a business. Your, the rest of the financial statements in here are set up more for governments. They show, you know, most people aren't really that concerned of, are we profitable with the government, more people are concerned with what services are you providing, and how much does it cost them to provide? So the rest of the financial statements are more geared to show that. They show where did the money come from, where did it go? And that's where it's more useful to have a comparison to your budget. So that's why there is no budget to actual comparisons in here related to those first two financial statements, only to the, the remaining, the governmental financial statements. What we call the fund financial statements. And, and these adjustments would not be there because they're more concerned with, um, annual short-term periods of where did the money come from, where did it go? And the value of a road wouldn't be reported in there anyway because you didn't receive any cash for that. So, is that making, is that helpful? I've kinda jumped in and tried to answer just some specifics, are there any other, uh, specifics maybe I could help with?
Miss Crockett, do you?
I just, I just keep asking them why they don't use part of this money for their courthouse. They had, as, as you showed, they had, um, they had three million dollars carryover from last year to this year.
From the, from the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Well, she's, she's, when she said that, I think she's, she thinks like cash, that's.
Yeah.
Like in general fund.
It is something that's a little different on those budget, if you're looking at those budget variances, doesn't necessarily translate to cash that's left over. You know, I, I kinda think of it as, oh, from, if I were thinking about my own personal finances, I may have budgeted, say a hundred bucks a week for a month, uh, that's gonna come in. And, um, maybe I won the fantasy football pool or something, beat all the other guys, which would never happen because I'm not that good at it, but, you know, there could be an unexpected source of money come in, and I get an extra three hundred bucks this month. And I didn't go back and change my budget for that, so, um, you know, and, and I may have gone ahead and used that money to pay my regular bills, pay my insurance and, and, um, made the car payment and, and made the, the mortgage payment and everything. The extra money that came in during the month may still have been spent, and spent for legitimate purposes, but we never back, went back and said that, oh, I needed to account for this in my budget as well. So it looks like on a budget statement that I had a whole lot of, I had a real positive variance that more money came in than what I'd actually planned for. But it didn't mean I had any money left over at the end of the month because I probably spent it, spent it on legitimate expenses, so what I look at more whenever I'm trying to look and see what, uh, what monies are on hand, that should be on hand, is the difference between the, the net revenues and expenses, um, added to the previous year instead of the budget variances. The budget variances, uh, you know, depending on your budgeting practices, may or may not be that useful. You know, and, and like we said, we had one year where we didn't budget for some of the revenue, so, you know, when we have gaps like that, it makes those comparisons not as useful as comparing some of those other numbers. Like the, and, and it's labeled in here, uh, usually as the excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures. You know, like I said, in, in, I believe that's the instance what we're talking about, where there was a lot more money on the actual than there was in the budget.
Right.
What we found was that money was spent, and then, and we found that it was spent on legitimate purposes.
Well, then why is it a carryover if it was spent?
It's not necessarily a carryover, it's, uh, what you're looking at there is a budget variance. And that's just.
Well, it's stated a carryover on your report.
Where, where was that at?
I think it's around forty-four.
Around page, page forty-four.
Around there, I think. Or may, it is at the end, go on, back out, I think, after the expenditures.
Okay.
And it had showed two thousand five hundred, or two million five hundred sixty-six thousand, um, carryover from fourteen into fifteen, and then it shows three million going into sixteen.
Is, is this the number you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, the three million would be what's available.
That is a carryover for sixteen?
Right, but that's also, this is the general fund that is all of those funds consolidated in together. If we wanted to just look at the county's general fund, we would go back to a report that's gonna show that same column, but it's just for the general fund, and it would be this column right here. See, this is what the county considers their general fund, and it was six hundred thousand, that three million should be tied back in here. If we get to the total of all of these columns.
Okay, that was, that was all of these, the, your welfare, your health.
Right, here's where that money then ties back in too, so, so, this is how many columns, you know, it's four pa- five pages worth. That's the ending balance then of what the county has for their general fund, the tuberculosis fund, mental health fund, animal control fund. You know, when you add those all up, so we, we've got about six hundred thousand, and, and like you said, that ends with three million. The bulk of that, we're gonna find some of that's in the liability insurance fund, there's another three hundred in the workers' compensation fund. And a lot of those, sometimes have to do with timing, you know, the insurance payments are made. A, a lot of the revenue will come in when the taxes are collected and then there's, they're paid out throughout the year. So you'll build up a really big fund, and then it whittles down until the next year's taxes are collected. That seems to be where the bulk of those, um, of those amounts were, you know, a year, and it adds up to that amount.
I didn't know that you were here, Jeff, and I didn't know if you had the chance to address the fact of why we have, again, uh, Kemper and you both are doing our, working together.
Yeah, there is, um, that all started, in fact, I can't remember what year it was, maybe two thousand five, six, seven, somewhere around there. There was a change in the rules, used to it was, um, before it was Kemper, it was, uh, Williams, Williams and Lenz. And they were able to come in and take the county's records and make all of the adjustments needed to be able to put them in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and then at the same time they were doing that, they were applying procedures to test those balances.
Now, is that unusual for a county to do that?
That, that also was post Enron, which was the auditors were too close to.
Well, that's when the rule came about, yes, the, the rule came about and changed that, it was after WorldCom and Arthur Andersen and Enron and Tyco and several other companies. They changed a rule that said now that if the accounting firm is making those adjustments and auditing them at the same time, the accounting firm is now auditing themselves more than they're auditing the county. So they said you can't do that anymore. So, uh, there was quite a shakeup in, in client relationships with, uh, accounting firms around that time. A lot of the work then they couldn't do. So, what happened at that time was Williams, Williams and Lenz went through and said, okay, well, this is about how much of the fee that the county is paying is related to just the accounting work that they're doing. And this is how much of the fee is related to the auditing that we're doing. And they said, if you go find another auditor to do this part, we'll continue to do this part for the county and we'll just charge this much. Well, uh, we were approached to see if we would be interested in doing the auditing portion, and we were happy to do that. But then our fee was more in line with just the portion that used to be paid just for the audit. So what you look, what you, what you really came out with was having two firms to be able to rely on. One that was for doing the preparation of the financial statements and one to do the audit, and together it was costing about exactly what it had been costing in previous years for one firm to do all of it. But, you know, I kinda thought it was a benefit for the county of having, uh, two different resources to be able to rely on. Uh, and for a long time, that worked out pretty well. Then I think, uh, uh, the cost, my understanding was the cost for, for the other portion, the bookkeeping portion started getting a little more significant, and I think we kept the line, I think on the audit, I think, uh, we've been charging the same amount as we did way back in, in that first, first year. But I think that was, my understanding of the reason for the switch then from one accounting firm to the other. That brought with a lot of, uh, challenges as far as, like you noted, that, you know, numbers might have been reported in one spot for several years, and then, okay, we got a new accountant, and they believe that it should be done a little bit differently, so there's a lot of interpretations in there. And, uh, it created some things that looked a little different, and it took us a little while to get used to that too. Because, you know, we're expecting to find something in one spot, and now we're finding it somewhere else, but, you know, that's something we could, we could, we could manage that. And that's why our opinions weren't any different on the financial statements, uh, cause we were able to, to find those things.
Are we the only county that operates this way that you know of or that you deal with?
The other counties that I work with in southern Illinois don't prepare their financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and therefore it's not required, uh, to have the two. In order for you to get a clean opinion on your financial statements, so they have to be prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and most counties do just a cash basis. You know, there's pros and cons, I mean, it's, it's obviously faster, it's, uh, it's, you can eliminate the extra firm. But the numbers are more subject to manipulation just based on timing, and they would still be appropriate to do that, so it, it's, that's the drawback. You know, a county can, can hold when they handle the transaction just around the end of the year and can significantly change their financial statements one way or the other and still get clean opinions on it that way. Under this, the way these are done, can't do that. It's also, excuse me, a lot of the, uh, federal agencies that provide funding, uh, do not like cash-based financial statements, and they're making it harder and harder for counties to continue to be able to do that. I know that HUD and, and education, both are pushing very hard to require everybody to have to do financial statements the way you do them. My, uh, work right now, I am auditing four counties, two in Illinois and two in Missouri. And, and here in Illinois, you guys prepare yours in accordance with GAAP, and the other county does not. And in Missouri, they, I have one county that prepares theirs in accordance with GAAP and one that does not. So I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the same in both, both states. Now, the other county that I audit in Missouri that, that prepares similar statements to yours, they don't hire the extra firm because their elected county auditor is also a CPA, and she's, she's trained and capable of making all those adjustments herself. But I'll also tell you that their, their audit requires an extensive, extensively more work is involved to do their audit than yours because of the work that's done by the other firm. And their fee is about double what yours is for their audit.
So the ones in the office cannot be trained to change it from the cash to their-
And it's not as simple as just going to, uh, to a training seminar. You know, i- it's the kind of stuff that, I mean, quite honestly, it, it's difficult for us and, and, and every one of my auditors is certified public accountants with five-year accounting degrees. You know, i- it's, it could be done, but, you know, I would think that, uh, it would be a couple of years' worth of training and a, a significant amount of money. I mean, y- in my opinion, I would think that you would have to have a s- at least one CPA on staff to be able to do this.
Just as an aside, that's a problem with the regional office of education, because we're always in the education field and working with federal money. And, uh, we always see that finding every year, and your option is to find somebody, like you said, that's CPA level, who are expensive to hire. And as I pointed out to the board, I'm going through yet somebody else again, because the auditor general's office just hired away my, my last one. So that becomes an issue. Or you do like ROE two did at the end, which was they paid the firm to come in and prepare, and they got a clean on it, but, uh-
We, we do the, the end of going in and preparing the financial statements for probably about ten different clients. And then those reports will be sent to the auditor. But then on the flip side, uh, we have arrangement with probably a half dozen clients where we do the same as we do for yours.
A lot of school districts will have that finding too, because they just can't meet the standard.
Exactly, exactly. It's, it's become almost a default.
Any other questions?
I appreciate it.
I hope that's helpful.
Yeah.
You know, I, uh, for, for one thing, we appreciate the chance to work with the county and, and do their audit for several years, but, you know, I'm more interested in the numbers are what the numbers are. And, and, I mean, you folks have seen over the years, we're not afraid to, to put written findings in whenever we think they're appropriate. You know, we're, we're, we wanna be helpful, a- and we wanna help, uh, wherever we can. But we also don't, you know, for lack of a better phrase, don't have a dog in the hunt. So we just, we put the reports together and the numbers are what the numbers are.
And that's what it's supposed to be.
I figured that's the best way for me to, to handle things, so, you know.
Once you do your audit, they do sign off on it?
It's-
Answer any exceptions or anything that you have?
Any recommendations that we make, you, you see those in the back of the report. What we do is we provide those, um, in draft form before the, the audit goes, because I don't want any surprises. You know, sometimes my comments aren't very pleasant, but at least, uh, you know, I don't wanna surprise these folks. And we do ask for their comments, um, in writing, so that we can provide those in the report. So you've seen, you've seen the, the responses to the recommendations. So we do appreciate getting those in time to be able to provide those printed, so everybody will know here's, here's what, uh, the county's response is. And then, uh, you know, in, in following years, we always have kind of a follow-up of, of, here's how it went.
And then before, like I said, I didn't know you were here. We have cleared up the fact that there is not one and a half million dollars missing, that it has been spent and accounted for.
Yeah, if we had, uh, any indication that money was missing, it would have been with big red flags. I mean, in fact, before the audit would have even been finished, we would have been in here talking with you folks. And we would have been, uh, recommending the involvement of law enforcement. I mean, that's, that's part of our audit, i- if we have any reason to believe something like that. We, uh, we do issue a report. It, it's, it, it's, you know, last time we talked about the reports, I, I always try to explain that there's two reports in here. The first is our opinion on the financial statements themselves. And, uh, excuse me. That's where we explain that these financial statements are the responsibility of management, uh, of the county, and that my job as the auditor is to give an opinion on whether or not they're fairly stated. And it goes on to explain the standards that I adhere to. And, uh, it does explain that, in my opinion, these financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in all material respects. I mean, that's the technical language, but that's, that's a clean opinion, that's an unmodified opinion. The second report that we issued is, uh, related to the county's internal controls and their compliance with laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, things that are financially related. And in that report, we, we don't actually issue opinions. But what we're explaining in that report is that for us to be able to conduct the audit, we have to understand how those internal controls work. You know, what processes do we have to make sure that money isn't, uh, stolen? Or to make sure that money aren't recorded improperly or that the financial statements are accurate. And like I said, we don't actually issue opinion on them. But if we find anything that we would consider to be either a significant deficiency or a material weakness, that's the report where we would re- where we're gonna say, hey, these are the things we found. And, uh, I believe, double check this, just to make sure I don't misstate something here. Those were the things that we mentioned and referred to with those findings in the back, that those were the only, uh, problems we found that we would consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So if, um, a- and we consider as part of the internal controls is the hiring of the other firm to be able to help put these things together.
How long have you been doing this, Jim?
All auditing or your audit?
All auditing.
All auditing. I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-two. I started out, my first job right out of college, I was hired by the Missouri State Auditor's Office. Back then, it was Margaret Kelly. Shows my age a little bit. That was five or six state auditors ago for the state of Missouri. What they did was they sent me out to do county audits. And, uh, for the smaller counties in Missouri, third and fourth class counties that couldn't afford their own elected auditor. So, so auditing counties is where I learned how to be an auditor. I, I did that for over four years, and I've been with the firm of Beeson, Kane and Rowe since ninety-six. So this past summer was my twentieth year with the firm, so I've been doing this twenty-five years. But I, I learned and got my specialty as a government auditor. And since then, we kind of, I was brought in to be the audit manager at the firm and became a partner in two thousand two. And, uh, because of my background, we kind of gear our audit firm towards not-for-profit and governmental clients. So we probably do sixty percent of our audits. We've probably issued over a hundred reports last year. And probably over sixty percent of them are governments of some sort, whether it be a county, a city, a school district, or a water district, or whatever. So been doing this for a long time.
One thing I had brought up to them, you had wrote in, and I'm not sure which audit you had wrote in, or someone had cut it in, that, um, they were to use their restricted funds, uh, before they go into unrestricted funds?
What that is, is, is a required disclosure for the county. They're supposed to tell, what is our policy? If we have money that comes in that can be used either for restricted or unrestricted purposes, what's our policy? What do we do first? And I believe that's the county's policy, which is kind of the standard policy, that, that we're gonna use it for the restricted purposes first. And then anything that's left over, we're gonna use it for whatever purposes we need.
Is that the nine-one-one funds you were talking about?
Yeah.
So I think that's the comment you're talking about, hoping-
Yeah.
As if I'm following you right, then that's what that's-
They had said they couldn't touch the nine-one-one funds, so.
Yes. Yeah, those monies, um, like I said, I'm going on memory now, it's been since last summer, since we were here working. I don't wanna get you confused with somebody else. But the, the source of your nine-one-one money, is that all charges for services, or is that tax-funded?
How do we receive it?
Right.
It's, uh, it's based on, uh, revenue of the phone service. They get so much per, you know, it's under city bill.
And, and I believe then, uh, thanks for kind of jogging my memory. Like I said, I've got several different counties that I work with.
They use that money to maintain the nine-one-one.
And I believe that was part of the original, when that money was levied, that was stated as this is what that money's gonna be used for.
Correct.
Yeah, so if I found, while doing my work, that the monies from the nine-one-one fund were being transferred over to the general fund and being used to pay for just normal operations, I would consider that to be, uh, an issue with compliance. And I would probably have a comment in the back if it wasn't being used for nine-one-one. So sometimes what you'll see is some funds will start building cash balances, uh, and other funds are needing cash, and this fund's got cash, why can't we use that cash over here? It's probably because of that. Whenever that source of money was put into place, it was probably restricted for, to only be able to be used for a particular purpose.
Can it not be used for nine-one-one dispatchers? Or a portion of it?
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I mentioned something to Keith, he said he'd be welcome to talk to you about it and try to explain it to you.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, can it not be used for a portion of that?
I think, yeah. I think he, no, I don't know.
From what I understand, this fund's going to go away, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I'm just wondering, can we not use some of it before it's done away with?
They use that to maintain the equipment for the dispatchers for nine-one-one. So if we went through that money, how would we maintain that equipment?
Well, when's the funds going to go away?
Don't know, it could be twenty-twenty, if you're saying. Might be later. Eventually, the state police is gonna take over, nine-one-one's what we told, so. It's very bad for the communities, because now when you make that phone call, I mean, you might be calling two hours from here to a dispatcher. They have to answer the phone, turn around and dispatch it to the sheriff's department. Let's just hope all that works out. I mean, we, I'm sure you, I'm sure you as a resident don't want that to happen either.
Well, no, but I, I don't want to see this money taken away from us if we can use part of it for something at this point.
We've been told by, I guess, Patrick, that the money that we currently have shouldn't be taken away from us. At some point, the money's gonna quit coming in.
Okay.
So maybe once nine-one-one, or the state police takes it over, whatever excess revenue's in there at the time, then maybe we can use. But I think it would be, uh, maybe a bad idea to use it now, but we don't know if that's always gonna happen. And then we don't have the money to maintain nine-one-one equipment.
So you don't think they're going to take what we have? They just won't give anymore?
I can't say for a hundred percent.
Right, but you don't think so?
Well, that's what, uh, our state's attorney thought. I mean, I, I can't promise you.
Well, I'm not asking for promises, I'm just, you know, I've just heard that we're gonna, we're going to lose this money, but I didn't hear it was the income that we're gonna lose from it. It, I just heard the fund was going to go away.
The state police is gonna take the income, that's another way the government-
For granted.
Another way the governor's taking money away from counties. And so the governor's chose to, to take that money and give it to the state police.
Okay.
So. Just put more burden on the county.
He's consolidating some operations, or that's, uh, theory.
Yeah, but I mean, that can be really risky when people's making phone calls, and who knows if it gets dispatched and, I mean. I don't know, I think it's a bad idea. Anything else?
I don't like some.
I hope that's been helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Stroger.
Well, you're welcome. Um, you know, that, uh, this last year, we didn't get together and visit, maybe we should have, uh, but, uh, and that's, that's mostly my fault. You know, a- as, as you all know, whenever we get done with our audit, if we consider it to be a routine audit, we'll normally just send the audits, uh, and, and let you all make the decision if you wanna, uh, visit or, uh, but, uh, if we ever have anything that we come across that we wanna make sure that you are aware of, we will specifically request, uh, a sit-down like this. So, um, you know, I just don't want you to think that we might let something big just kind of slide along. If there's something that we wanna specifically sit down with, we'll request, uh, a meeting like this. But otherwise, we're always available. You know, if it's a routine audit, then we'll just leave it up to your judgment, whether it's more or less. I will, I believe you. That might be your copy?
Yes, yeah.
All right, well, if that's it, I'm glad to be available, so, uh, otherwise, I'll get out of your way and let you have your back to me. Sure you got enough business.
Here's Keith's number, he said, he would welcome to give him a call.
Okay.
Hold this up, because, uh, no, generally, folks aren't that interested in talking and having long discussions on government finances. I find somebody interested, I could talk all day, so I better get out while, while we can. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time, Jim.
Okay, make sure.
Thank you, Jim.
That's twice, twice today, he's got it flipped.
I guess it's me then.
Um, last month, first time I've ever just come back down, required quarterly report.
Hold on, sir. I did not see we had our name on our sign. You had the chairman's there for a minute, didn't you?
It says Mr. Childers, and this says P. Onwepa.
Try to cover it again, if I can. Quarterly report, uh, first half page is just, we're at this since, um, end of August through the end of November. That's the quarter this covers and some things that we've sponsored. And, uh, games get mentioned, but that's also oft- often when I'm in and out of schools, but also for some other reasons. Uh, we'd also talked, I think, before about, uh, State Superintendent Dr. Tony Smith was down the first week of November. We've been visiting that. At Jefferson, um, so that's included in there as well. Back with just the record-keeping, um, we, of course, didn't get, uh, Mr. Worthing in until, um, early December. But, uh, I have started again on Torrancey in this county, and he's been working in the state attorney's office in the schools on that. Teacher certification, we've been busy helping people there, um- Teacher certification, we've been busy helping people there, um, fingerprinting services that we do at the office down here. Actually, it's available Tuesday through Thursday. We've already done a hundred sixty-six just since July first, so, um, people in and out building for that service. Some of those have been driving to Marion before, um, and that is where we have the machine. GED testing, um, and that is just the testing sessions that we hold, which are given at Johnny Logan College in the computer lab that, uh, we're allowed to use. Shawnee College does the, uh, test sessions for down here, but we give certificates for both, and we have, of course, all the records. School bus driver training, I think you've seen and we've talked before, uh, people are always looking for bus drivers. Actually, in this region, uh, we've already, uh, served seventy-four this year, trained seventy-four new ones. But you haven't seen the signs come down, if they're not still looking for drivers. In addition, everybody has to have a pressure course each year. Uh, Franklin Williamson County groups are on a, uh, an October to October calendar, so we got two hundred and ten of them through. Uh, we do the Masac and Johnson County, uh, training there on a spring calendar, because it's gotta be done within three hundred and sixty-four days of each other. For the federal homeless grant, with all the counties we have, see Masac again, low, which, uh, we're looking again to make sure everybody's identifying people correctly to make sure that they get the funds that they, uh, are allowed to get, uh, to cover support services. We continue to be part of a statewide, uh, system support grant, uh, this, there is one year remaining on that grant. That is a rather large one. That's when I get to spend two days in Bloomington next week, as we try to figure out where that will go, because that is tied into federal funds, uh, which again, only if you talked about, is why, uh, we had to follow federal audit standards. Health and life safety, we will start on our walk-throughs in Alder Johnson, Masac County buildings in the spring. We've already covered the Franklin Williamson County buildings, uh, with the state fire marshal, that's sixty-plus buildings, um, plus the plans and reports that come up as, as we go through, uh, the course of time. That's correctly related. Going back to page eight, Starquest, uh, Regional Safety School Program in Johnson City. We've had fifteen this year, and in Proppolis, at the end of November, we had had four. That seems low, on the other hand, that's probably about where we started last year, because we started late. There are students who are about to be suspended or expelled, um, who end up there. That's one of those weird programs though, where for the program to be successful, and have the students and be able to, uh, generate revenue to support the students in the program, kids have got to be getting in trouble. Of course, I guess that's a little like the, uh, you wouldn't need jail if nobody got in trouble. And we hope that, uh, the students don't sit there, don't stay long, but if they are, we serve them, so.
How, how, uh, successful are you once they get there?
We turned it in with a grant each year, but I haven't really ran the numbers yet to see if we are getting them back. I know, and, and you maybe have seen in the paper, uh, some incidents with students, um, in the county, in and outside of school, we ended up with some of those there. And obviously, being somewhere, getting an education, uh, every day is, is, um, better than being expelled and wandering the street all day long.
How do you, uh, is it hard to keep them from, uh, getting in altercations with each other there? I mean, we're more likely to probably get in fights and stuff?
Not too badly, no. Um, and actually, that's kind of like, our, our program's up in Johnson City. And you hear the concern, well, everybody is bad there, no? People have made bad decisions, but, um, I, I know, in, in our other program, you hear the story of people growing up back thirty, forty, fifty years ago, none of us were well off, but we didn't know it, because everybody was kind of on the same plane. You don't have, like, you don't have some of those other things that drive junior high, high school society. And kids might just find a comfort zone there, or they know this is their last shot, so, let me do something and then get back with the rest of my friends at school. That's, that's what I hope to have.
Good deal.
Um, we are still, uh, it's Franklin County Juvenile Attention Centers, still open, used to conduct the education program there, a hundred and three through there, as the year has gone on.
There's seventeen at the juvenile center?
That was on that date in November. They're running between, uh, about fifteen to twenty-five. But, um, the Juvenile Attention Center is like county jail. You may have twenty-five one day, and five of them go to court, and nobody comes in. And then, uh, which makes it a challenging program to run, and it's almost a little like when, when, when a student misses school and you call in for homework. Say it like that, so we try to get to work and get them where they're supposed to be for the one, two, three, five, ten days they may or may not be there. On the flip side, how many of those students haven't been anywhere? Hence why they're in trouble, and why they're in the, in the court system. So, um, on the other hand, this might be, again, one of the, uh, opportunities, and with our staff, some of the people they can at least identify with and have somebody steady for a few days. So, we hope to see that as well. Uh, some do go on to Harrisburg and into the state system, others go back home, go back to the homeschool district. I know as part of the, um, one of the charter school proposals, the government's education secretary was pushing for some kind of state system, because you don't necessarily want a student going right out of attention center, right back into another school. That's a little bit of a sudden change and shift. Knowing the kids at school may not necessarily want them there and staff, but it may be a, a tough jump for the kids as well, but to do some kind of program in between. But again, trying to predict numbers and funding and how you would do a program like that statewide, they're still having issues with. You may have a, a mass of people in, in, uh, Madison, St. Clair, Cook, DuPage, some of these other counties. You may have one or two a year here, so, um, that makes it tough to predict going forward. At the last page, we are almost finally staffed up, um, one more clerical person to hire. I'd mention our bookkeeper accountant, uh, leaving to the auditor general's office. We did find a replacement for her, that transition is happening this week. We finally, for the first time, I guess, in seven, eight years, finally got the one finding off the buyer, audit each year about the, you didn't prepare these correctly. But like, like you face, um, school districts face, smaller units of government face, trying to decide what's the best investment to do, the extra audit firm or, or not. It's just, uh, how we do business. Do not joke with auditors, that is just a way to employ more auditors though, they don't have a sense of humor, so. Shouldn't have said that. There's just, you can, Masac County, right now, we do have, uh, let's see here, Janice Barrett is still our employee here. Sheila Meredith, who works in Johnson County two days a week, is here two days a week. And then, uh, Mr. Holly, uh, the instructor, and, and Miss Mullinick's the aide, uh, working with the students we have.
Matt Wine, does, does he work down the line, the south campus, is that Wine?
Yeah, I've kinda got it.
He's the instructor over there?
I've got it clunked together.
Okay, I saw it.
Otherwise, and then, uh, Mr. Carricker is, is part-time as needed on the homeless side, and then he helps with the bus driver training down here. We've got, we've got two available, and that's worked out well. He's not be able, been able to do things, she can come down and I suppose, so, he's helped us there. And then filed the, um, reports last week. I think that was down here, I think that was Wednesday, I think it was the day, I think, go back to El Reyo. Permando's in front of me, it shows our, uh, three main accounts, our office account, where we were, on June thirtieth, were up just a little bit. Uh, state money had come in semi-on time. Uh, our institute fund is out because, uh, because of this one grant we have, we haven't spent as much local funds on professional development, because we're getting that from the state, plus, uh, trying to be careful, um, we have grant funds you can't move around either. But also trying to make sure I've got enough cash flow to fund along as, as we bumped, as our gas gauge, as I guess you could say, is bumped around a little. And then our distributed fund, uh, we've had about eleven million in and out, which includes our sales tax money that goes to the collecting for Franklin and Williamson Counties. So, our bookkeeper keeps busy. Otherwise, schools are back in session, um, been in and around, uh, all the buildings in Masac County, Joppa Maple Grove. I did see where, uh, Joppa Maple Grove bringing back part of a music program. They had already been making that move, but when we do our compliances, which is part of one of the things that we do, that was one of the things we noted that they weren't covering, so, uh, and as we work together, getting everybody where they're supposed to be.
Now, Haley, is he gone now?
Yes.
Mike Worthing.
Uh, has stood, sat out here doing security.
He's transgotten, man.
He's still in security, too?
At the moment, so, whatever days he does that, he does that, whatever days he does.
Work the week, the week, the plan.
I think they work three days in a row, in a row.
And then, um, and then down towards the security, he may run into some of his, his clients, his clients.
Yeah.
So.
He's a good man.
So, that may be.
That's a good voice.
You're here too.
Oh, since you're here. Let's talk about this.
Never hurts, never hurts.
About to retire, now he's got two jobs.
Trying to stay active, trying to stay active. Uh, and I know we've been moving right along on, on some of the things there. I mean, he had done some of that work he's had back, I guess, for the Masac District one, before he was chief, so. They've worked with him quite a bit. And then, just a correction, I think I saw it in the paper. We had returned a little bit of, uh, funds to the county from our county budget last year, uh, overpayment on something. It was two hundred and forty-seven dollars, seven cents, I think. There was a comma in the wrong place.
Ah, okay, two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
I think it said twenty-four something, like, wait a minute, sit back. Sorry.
Would've been nice, but no. You do what you can, but you can't do that.
Yes. Ah, here's the number I was looking for. And then the next two days, we're at regional superintendent meetings in Springfield. We're back at it. Um, yeah, I said eleven million on the, uh, distributive over the course of the year. Eleven million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, zero fifty-three. Our, our, let's see here, institute fund went from twenty-six thousand to forty-six thousand. Like I said, just have, I've had grant money that I could use, and just trying to keep something in the bank so we can fill out everybody and do payroll, and then, uh, and the office account was, uh, a year ago, it was a hundred and thirty-seven. And this past year, we were at a hundred and eighty-one. That was, uh, partly helped by the recent outbreak last year, not knowing that we were gonna give eighty thousand dollars of all the services funds that was already sitting there waiting to go, uh, not in the general fund. We didn't know until June twenty-ninth, if we'd be getting or not, so we were, we pretended to be eighty thousand down, or, uh, okay. So, trying to hold our own there. Haven't heard of too many building issues since then, if we can keep people from messing with our mailbox, and, uh, and we haven't even got the snowplow season yet, so.
The other one they trashed, right, and I don't want that mailbox. Which one was it? Well, I ran a, you know, sorry, buddy. But, um, I didn't say anything, walked to that, but.
Thanks for all your work, uh, working with the four counties, you guys are facing the same, uh, struggles and issues, all of them are. Appreciate your work and your time, I would do put it. Any other questions for me?
No, we're good.
Okay. See you now. Have a few weeks.
Take care, man.
Appreciate it, man.
Jeff, come on in. Jason, we're about to begin.
Bill, where are you at?
You're gonna come out and tell me when.
Well, probably can't today, but. Tomorrow?
Yep.
Is it tomorrow?
I do. Uh, I can't, this is.
Afternoon.
But it don't matter.
It'd be better for me, because I need a water nap this morning.
Okay, tomorrow at one.
One would be good.
I'm gonna, unless you need me, I'm gonna go down and say, Laurie, I'm late.
Is there a motion to dismiss?
I, I will motion to adjourn unless Jason asks something that we need to.
No, I don't like that.
I don't mind.
Maybe I'd sit down and miss that.
Time to say.
I don't know this one, George.
I think we're gonna have a motion for Cheryl Bang for. I guess you remember now. County extension.
I made that motion.
A second.
Sign away, boy. You're in good shape, David.
Now, the tax save?
No, they're resolutions, not tax, they're just resolutions.
Well, they've got that. Got the one, new, definitely.
Yeah. Just the resolution, the resolutions for, um.
The name, the way to talk.
Approval of, uh.
Approval, yeah. They're just approvals, and you can just run down the list there.
Okay.
Go back for every one.
Uh, Jason, do you know, can, can y'all vote?
I think we just vote them in as a whole.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Resolution.
There's not an objection.
Purchaser, William D. Holt. Purchaser, Barbara J. Wilkins. Purchaser, Sun Industries. Purchaser, Paul C. Young. Purchaser, Brett Taylor. Purchaser, Paul Wilkins. And Tom Showmaker.
I just showed you.
I'll say it, man.
I'm gonna say it, right?
Yeah.
Sure, first?
Yeah.
I'll call all of them. I'll go one.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, he's back in the saddle. He's, he's been off for a week or so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. We were running on a very skeleton crew in the last couple of weeks. We haven't had too many.
Trying to get the vacations and all that.
Yeah. A lot, a lot of my guys take off around Christmas and New Year, but everybody's back now, so.
Don't wait dry, snowstorm's here next week.
Well, we had a pretty big heavy rain. Didn't want, had to cause a lot of washouts last week. And we're out fixing some of that now.
Was road holding it pretty good?
As far as I know, there, I mean, there's some roads that are not in too good a shape right now, but as soon as we get them graded and some of the washouts fixed on the gravel. I mean, it's no doubt it'll be sloppy. It's just how it is in the wintertime, but...
I did get a call, Joe, on that road from, was it Rice Hill, I guess? Where you go with the interstate there and go to the county line. I think he done some work on it, maybe. Graded. And I was up there, and it wasn't all in, but it looks like it might need some material to get a change.
Okay.
You did, you did from the corner there to the interstate bridge.
On the other side.
I think, do you have an inch and a half on any of those roads? I know you put laughing before, I think.
You don't put an inch and a half straight on.
Don't. I think that we're in a, it looks like that road might be, you know, soft enough that that would work. There's a reason not to put on there too, too big.
No, I mean, you have to work it in. I mean, you know, work it in while it's loose, you know, so it doesn't, I mean, inch and a half just sits on top. It'll get shoved off in the ditch, but if you work it in, when it's there, it's all right.
Well, it might, I mean, it might now, but, you know, for the other friends and all, it's not going anywhere. And I did get a call from Long John. You know where he lives?
I think so, on Upper Salem Road.
Yeah. Right at that intersection, that Turner lives behind him there.
I'm not really sure where.
Just right beside Long John's house. Turner lives in the house behind him, in the woods. So that cove, between Upper Salem, well Turner's driveway, actually. He says it stopped there. And that may have just been the front end of it, you know. I didn't go out there, but he said the water is running, jumping out of the ditch and running down that guy's driveway.
Okay.
But now, maybe, you know, just easy fix. I don't know if the cove stopped there, but I guess Anthony's not there.
Right. Run up there and check that. Is Turner's driveway his own, east side of his house?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. It drives across from...
Right next to state property.
Okay. Right before you start going down the hill.
George, George Landline, Andy George, right?
Now, on this payroll, should we give any holidays on there in the state?
Is there what now?
Any holiday pays? It goes through twelve twenty-seven, but I was just looking at the dates. Is that the right date? The payroll goes through?
Well, it should have been through, one of the Wednes, last Wednesday, I guess.
I just didn't see no holiday pay on there. I didn't know.
Well, they just took, they don't, they take off, right?
I don't know what you mean by holiday pay, like...
Like Christmas.
For getting paid for a holiday?
Yeah.
I don't know how she actually records that on...
Okay.
No, I mean, this would, I mean, if it's through twelve point seven, it would, it should be on there, yeah.
Okay. I just know it's on the shares who were holiday paid.
Yeah, but I don't think we have holiday pay in our system for you all. It's just, she puts it in, but it's not holiday. It's not listed as holiday because everything comes out of those different accounts.
Well, I just added that.
So it doesn't matter what it is.
Okay, well, most of them have eighty hours, so I would think if they had holiday, it'd be like eighty-eight, or it'd be eighty plus paid.
But only if they work.
Yeah, you don't get extra for holiday.
They just take the day off.
But you don't get extra unless you're working.
They took off Monday.
So you don't get an eight-hour payday if you're off that day for the holiday?
Yeah, you get the eight hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Most of them, you know, have a different category for holiday, but you don't have that for his.
Because they didn't work.
Okay.
So they get straight time.
But if they worked, it would've showed, I mean, if it had snowed on Monday.
Then they would've got overtime.
Or Sunday or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or a holiday pay, whatever.
But because everything comes out of those different accounts. We don't add just a line item that says holiday for highway.
Yeah. Now, I mean, it'll all, everybody's holiday pay is gonna come out of the county highway account.
Right. Exactly.
But I don't know exactly how it showed up on here.
Well, he's tempting me, you know?
Yeah.
Eighteen dollars.
That's right.
And a shirt.
You should be twenty-two, man. You got a smart.
Budget cuts, huh? Is it for mileage or just showing up?
Yeah, mileage. My GPS detected or something. I don't know. We all got a D cruise. Joe, that, you know, when they grade those roads and end up with a windrow of grass and whatever, they tend to try to work that back in or what procedure on that?
Depends who the grader operator is. I mean, some of the guys do it differently than others. You know, when Calvin, a lot of times, he'll cut it, he'll cut all that grass off and windroll it up on the side until it kind of decomposes a little bit.
That's why that was one.
And then comes back and sifts through it to get the...
The best you can out of it.
Yeah, the stuff out and then the rock back on the road. That's, that's why he does it. He just doesn't take it all out. It's because there's a lot of rock mixed in.
Really about all you can do.
Yeah. And that, that right there is the main reason why a lot of people get upset because when you have to cut that grass off, I mean, there's gonna be dirt and stuff in it. It makes the road sloppy for a while.
Yeah.
There's no way to keep that off of the road, as far as I know. I mean, they're a paper road.
Yeah. That's gonna grow out there on the sign, on the shoulder.
Or continually put rock on it. I mean, of course, we just don't have the resources to continually put rock on. I mean, we do the best we can. And areas where it's, where it's muddy and rutted and stuff like that, we try to put new rock on, you know, as best
So did Jason look at more to...
Please, sir.
That's it, yeah. We'll be good. All right. Thank you, Joe. See y'all.
Is that chicken now?
Hmm?
Looks like ten minutes.
Might have pressing business.
We've had all this good week. Lori had one had made a disbursement to us, and Julie had made a mobile, her a real estate disbursement, and we had a mobile home disbursement, so we're gonna come up with, I think it's a little payroll.
Has everything been dispersed at Joppa Maple Grove, you know, the school district?
No, I'm sure there's still some left to disperse.
Will that be?
Normally, it's after the tax sound.
I just was reading in the newspaper, they have new to send their board article.
Normally, they'll call Julie if they...
Who's the school board actually? What's the date?
April fourth.
You have some contested ratio of ownership.
Yeah, there's four, four-year terms outstanding. There's six or seven people running around. There's two two-year terms, and all the two people signed up for those or those. And like in the past, it's usually, you know, four seats open for people running.
Yeah.
We're still working on that past that it's like that, that we don't have to have that. We've not got there yet.
What do you expect? So we haven't received anything until January. Everything's turning for December.
So that'll make it easier when we gotta cover those other two. We got one out of the way. About having these things. I was telling them, we've got utilities that need to be trained. I'm going, Adam Luttrell, she's got a kidney stone. She's off today, but oh, Adam Luttrell's at the man. And he's getting ready for the man, and we can't forget something.
I got something.
I don't know if you were in here. He'd be here about ten o'clock.